Council meeting from August the, I'm not August, I'm sorry, June twenty seventh to order. This is basically a work session to discuss solid waste operations and policies. And start the discussion on what types of changes, if any, we want to make and where we want to go from here. So obviously, I think there's maybe some broad topics. I know Mike's prepared a presentation, D W and A N's done some work. So, you know, obviously first, maybe talk a little bit about where we are right now. You know, any adjustments maybe we need to make to this fiscal year's budget. And then obviously, I don't know how deep we want to dig into the code. But figure out what our strategy is to updating the code section. Because if everybody's read it, there's obviously some changes that need to be made there. You know, Mike's got a presentation that he put together, I guess, to talk about long-term solutions and strategies. And some options we, you know, want to maybe review and look at. So I think that's kind of maybe the, is there anything else, Bart, that you?
No, I mean, you got, there are some, we'd like some very near-term guidance on some pressing matters. And one of the things I'll just go ahead and start off with is, you know, the whole notion of opting out and how that works. For one thing, I know Public Works would appreciate if we could maybe specify a timeframe right now for people to let us know they want to opt out and then move on to a policy.
Right.
Because the way it is now, there's really no end to it and it's just kind of every other day. We have a few requests here. Then we have people who call and say they want to opt out, but then they want to reconsider. And so if you're open to this kind of discussion, we'd really love it if you might establish a deadline right now of August first for people to tell us right now that you want to opt out.
All right, because I guess.
Bart, would that be to opt out right now? And if you don't, you're in through the end of the year or?
That's what we need to establish.
Okay, let me, let me tell you my thought, because I watched the meeting before last. And my thoughts are that we offer opportunities to participate, participate based on a fiscal year. And my immediate thought was to have two six-month periods, one beginning July one, one beginning January one. And basically, unless you tell us otherwise, we're going to provide the service for you and we're going to bill you for that. But if you want to opt out for a six-month period, you need to give us thirty days notice ahead of whichever one it is. So if you want to opt out beginning July first, you need to tell us June first. If you want to opt out beginning January first, you need to tell us December first. And that would be the broad general policy moving forward.
Almost like an open enrollment with healthcare.
Thank you, that's a good, that's an excellent analogy.
Can we do that?
And I'm talking about that, thank you.
What we can do.
The short answer is yes, you can do it.
I didn't know if we had to let people out whenever they want to, but then I could see us saying, well, then you can't opt in for another year.
And I was just trying to find, these are the service periods. And unless you tell us otherwise, you're, yeah.
Well, what you just suggested, Bart, does that sit well with you?
Sooner the better.
I mean, but have to, well, if we do August one.
I know, now this would be the introductory term.
Right, so we have, we couldn't go August one and January one and then next year go to July one or? You know, I mean, like, because right now, we don't have the time to go July one to our, to January.
It's however you want to put it.
We can make.
You could make it January one this year if you wanted, get it set onto the right schedule.
By then, you got to opt out?
Yeah, you got to opt out by December one of this year in order to have your opt-out begin January one of next year.
Yeah, but that's going to, that's going to create kind of a little bit of a counting and billing nightmare for that first six months.
Yeah. And I didn't look at Rachel yet either.
And with the August first deadline, I guess, because we're billing arrears, right? So.
Well, I mean, you do bill arrears on some, whenever we get, whenever we may change in the billing system, it's always off of the billing date. We don't go by a reading date because the system, when you put something in there like a rate, like August the first, it bills everybody in August at that new rate. So we don't really go by a reading date because you get to half of the month, half of it's June, half of it's July. You get to the end of the month, most of it's July. So to be fair to customers, you really need to do it for the whole month. So start wherever you're going to start as of the first working day of the month.
Okay, so. So we said July thirty first was the, the last day to opt out?
Right, so I'm planning on changing whatever I change over the weekend because there's other changes that need to be made. Like the accounting customers that need to be town customers, their services have got to be changed. That's not been done yet.
Okay.
So based on that, we would need to have an opt-out by July twenty eighth. And that gives us the weekend correct, I think, for August first.
And then starting August the first, anybody that hasn't opt, opted out by July the twenty eighth, would you start getting billed? Now, would they build, be billed for the month of July, where they got service or would it start, the service start in August first?
Well, it's going to be on their bill August. So part of the month's going to be July to August.
Okay.
And so where you're at, it's like over here.
Right.
As how much of it's going to be July.
Okay.
We're billing every week, so there's four cycles of bills.
Because they tie in with the electric bill.
So we're saving money.
I mean, Mike says we can do it, D W seems to like it, I love it. You guys know better than me.
Right, I mean, I'm.
It's, it's very disruptive for us right now because every day, if they don't call Public Works, they're calling Debra and then she calls two or three a day. But we have to stop them, I have to call the grass crews, say, hey, stop somebody, go to this address and pick it up. Because if you're not out there within an hour, they call back mad. And it's just, every day you're disrupting some other work to go pick up one cart here, one cart there.
So Mike, do we, is this, can this be done under the section where which Bart has the authority in the code to, to set up kind of rules and stuff?
For, for right now, in order to set a rule for this month, because it is going to take a few weeks to have an ordinance, both that I'm comfortable with and that you're comfortable with, you can, he can set that administrative rule right now.
Okay.
That might be something that we build into the ordinance going forward.
Yes, it's certainly built down the road. I was just, you know, wanted to make sure we had the proper authority somehow right now to.
And we can always change it later, like in a year, you know, see others' calls.
Do we need to take some type of, well, I guess if it's under that authority, we wouldn't need to take any kind of action.
I can publish it tomorrow.
A vote of any type right now, is that correct?
We're in a work session, we're batting around ideas and he wants input so that he can issue regulations.
Right, right, so we wouldn't have to do anything later or, I mean.
Well, we could tie it all up in the code later.
Yeah, I mean, later, yes, yeah, that's a big problem.
If it's working, then make it permanent.
All right, so, so we're going to, we're going to set the opt-out date for July the twenty eighth and then billing starts August first.
Okay, so they've got till July twenty eighth to opt out now. Question about that, what happens if they opt out, they return their trash can in January? Would that trash can be returned to them and they have to say they don't want it again?
No, that's a good question.
Yeah.
Basically, what we'll do is whatever choice you make will be in effect on an ongoing and rolling basis until you make a change under the provisions of what we'll set up.
So once you opt out, you're opted out until you decide to opt back in, correct?
Yes, that's my intent.
I mean, that, I mean, yeah, no, we're not going to take this back out there and you got to opt out again on January.
That's a good question.
That would not, that would not work, I don't think, no.
But you know, I, I think there's still kind of, if you opt out and you don't want our services and then you get to opt back in, to be perfectly honest with you, I think it should be a fee to opt back in.
I agree with that.
That's where I was going with that.
Yeah, I think it should be a fee for you to opt back in.
I mean, if you apply.
Because now everything is free, we bring everything.
Right.
You decide you don't want, you don't want it, so we take it back. And all of a sudden, you realize, okay, I want to get back in there, okay, well, now you got to pay this fee.
Right, because we got to take your trash can out there.
And we got to do a nominal fee, it's fair.
Just like D W said, it takes manpower, trucks to come off a job and go get, or take the trash can out there. So just like electricity, you've got to pay to real private service.
To opt back in.
Long, as it's nominal as well.
Can we do that? I mean, we can charge a fee to take them?
Yes, but that needs to be in action by council, not, Bart can't do that.
Right.
I just want to make sure we can do it.
We'll have to come up with a fee.
And that seemed a fair way to do that.
So, I mean, that would probably be, need to be a part of the whole ordinance discussion at that point in time, I guess. I mean, we don't need to rush to, to do that because at this point, you know, if you've opted out now, you're probably not going to opt back in next month. You know, or in sixty, ninety days, you know, it's not likely, so.
And then we can make it part of our checklist when people come in to sign up for new services.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Ask them then.
You have people coming up for new services and you do their application. And I've got a couple of forms that you can all have a look at. I put a ten dollar fee on the taking the trash cart out there and opting out, going to get the trash cart out. I put ten dollars on each one of the tickets. In other words, when we send a ticket to public works for them to take a cart out to a customer, we're going to charge them ten dollars. When we tell them to go pick it up, we're going to charge them ten dollars, that's just not my penalty though.
Okay. So if, if, if that's a brand-new customer, you, they would still pay ten dollars?
If they don't, if they're just doing a transfer and the trash is already there and they want the trash, we're not going to charge them.
Right.
Because we're not taking out any of the outfits.
Okay.
But if the account does not have trash on it and they want it, then we're going to have to send a ticket for them to take the trash cart out there. At that point, they're opting in and doing it for six months and they're opting in for six months. And we're going to send them a ticket to bring the trash cart out there. So to me, that's going to be charged.
Okay.
If they're already out there and then just transfer the service and they're good with having the refuse service, it's already out there, the carts are just going to be charged.
No, you're not going to get one bid.
These folks that are dropping out right now, we're, we're not going to charge them, are we?
Well, that's entirely up to y'all, but if you, if you have a town customer, okay, to attach our trash service right now, they're going to pick those carts up and they can take that off the account now.
I know, but we don't, we, we, we don't want, it's, it's almost like a.
I think they've already picked them up.
Yeah, if, if, if we're, if we're just, in this group, if we're just picking these things up right now, I would, I would, I think we.
No, they shouldn't get charged for the month of July.
I don't think we should charge them, I, just pick the thing up and go on. It, it's too much like you're trying to needle them and I don't think we need to do that kind of nonsense.
What do you think they're trying to do to us?
I, I know, Bob, I, 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 I agree with you, I agree, I agree with you.
But now moving forward.
Moving forward. If somebody calls us on August the fifth and says, I want to opt out, they're going to get the charge to go pick their trash can up.
Okay. What if they call August fifth and you just had the date, we said you got to wait till the next six?
Right.
Well, that's true, yeah, that's true.
Except for new customers.
Except for new customers.
Yeah, except for.
They don't dump trash and they won't get it, you can't go and come watch them.
No.
We should, to me, we should charge them to take the trash cart out there, just like a.
Do we do that now? So if somebody moves into town right now, or move, I mean, our brand-new house gets built, very, very first customer built, moves in there, do we charge them to take that trash can out there?
If it's a new, a new construction, no.
But if it's a transfer, oh, a transfer wouldn't matter because the trash can, trash stays there.
We don't charge for electric right now, we don't charge anything for trash right now. So take the cart out there or pick it up, whatever the case may be, we don't charge anything for that. Electric will charge fifteen for new services that needs to be found one and eight dollars for transfers.
I know, it's kind of, it's a pain for D W, I, I hate D W's men having to go out there and grab these things. But I think we'd be better off not trying to, you know, hit them with a charge.
No, I don't think.
Right now.
Right, right now, I don't think, none of us are talking about that right now, we're talking about January first.
From here on out, then, then, then that's fine.
Right.
I just want to make sure I understood that we weren't going to charge them ten bucks to go pick it up right now.
No, no, I don't think anybody's.
They've already brought it back, they've already been thinking.
They've already brought them back, yeah.
Well, there's, there may be some more and I just don't want to see people treated differently. That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, no.
I'm, I'm not, and I agree with Bob as far as charging them. If they decide, you know, six months from now, they, they'd like to have the trash pickup, you know, charge them a fee. I don't, that, that's, that's fair. But, but right now, let's, let's get through this nonsense.
Just, just to, to give a little bit of timeline, calendar right here, even if you decided tonight that you want to charge them ten dollars, that would still need to be adopted by ordinance.
They were not ready.
Which means that it wouldn't go into effect until after August one anyway. So that's, that, that is off the table.
I, I just want to make sure we weren't doing, we weren't doing something like that because that's all we need to do is somebody get a hold of that and they just eat us alive, I mean.
The main thing we need is the temporary guidance for Bart, correct?
Right.
And that's, as far as this August first and January first, I'm good with that, if you need a consensus.
I'm, I'm fine with it.
So, so the date for, you have on that, twenty eighth to opt out?
July twenty eighth.
July twenty eighth.
Okay, and after that, we don't accept anymore?
You can't opt out till.
Until December.
Till December first, which by then we'll have that written in the code.
Nobody can come in two or three days later and say, I'm going to opt out, it's too late.
D W, has, has anyone changed their minds?
Yes.
You take, took the.
Yeah, we, we've had people that have opted out and then a week later say, I've changed my mind, I'll opt back in.
Oh.
And we've taken the carts back out there.
Yeah.
And I think that's what's going to happen with a lot of them.
And we've had people who wanted it and had their carts taken by somebody else.
Yeah, a couple of them, their neighbor picked them up, brought them in, they called and they said, I didn't want that, so we took them back out.
Okay, a couple of questions as far as taking, removing the carts or bringing them back? Now, let's say somebody says they don't want trash service, but they bring the can back themselves, would they be charged if Public Works did not have to come out and get it? Or when they decide they want to opt back in, maybe six months later, they come and get the trash can themselves, would they have to pay the fee for the can?
You can't really have people come in and pick up the trash, that's something Public Works needs to handle.
Yeah, that, that creates a liability if they're carrying our cart and it drops off and hits somebody or something because it's our property.
That's town property, they really should be bringing it back.
Right, that's, that's the whole thing, yeah.
Yeah, because that's something else brought to my attention.
Yep.
So, um.
So we have an answer on the August one?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, we're, we're doing that, we're still, we're still making sure process-wise, there's just, so if somebody has opted out, they can't opt back in until January the first, is what you're saying?
They would have to notify us by December first that they would.
December first or thirty first?
So.
Well, they would have to let us know December first, they, they wanted to resume at January first.
Gotcha.
Okay.
There was no exception to that other reason, I mean, it's my correct?
Right, that's my understanding.
I think financially, that's a good decision because you could potentially have to add staff, there's a lot of changes that we would have to account for.
Right. So is there, on the temporary basis, because to me, that's sort of like the emergency level, what else do you need to know from us?
I think I'm good on the initial rule that I'll publish.
So everything else would be more code, we would need to actually, that's going to take longer. But that's all you need for now, Bart?
I think so, D W, does that cover what you need?
Yeah, and then the only thing I would need to know, you know, after August first, the people that opted out, what's, I guess y'all be talking about the services?
Oh, yeah, if you're.
The transfer station, I don't think, if they opt out, they opt out. I don't think they should be getting the transfer station.
So let's, 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 let's just make, get a consensus, you're opting out of the curbside pickup, you're opting out of bulk pickup, brush pickup, um.
Leaf collection.
Leaf collection and use of the trans, use of the transfer station for the first five hundred pounds free.
Yeah, you can still come, but you'd have to pay.
You got to pay.
Because right now, we accept, you know, county people come, they just have to pay.
Right, you can still use it, but you pay, you pay them for the first pound you use.
And I'm going to, do we mention cleanup week at all?
Yeah, he, he did.
Did he?
Bulk pickup, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking bulk because of the regular.
Bring and file cleanup, yeah.
Great, we'll need to specify that because somebody asked us.
Is everybody, is.
I agree with that, I don't, if they want out there, all the way out.
Yeah, I do.
Definitely.
All right, so that's, we're all in agreement on that, so.
You're in, you're in, if you're out, you're out.
I, I guess what we'll do, we'll have that printed list and, I mean, the trash, because, because they won't be able to put a trash, they don't have a cart. It will make it tough cleanup week and stuff because we'll have to have the printed list.
Right.
You know, probably what we'll do, I've already thought about it, is like, because people put stuff out, but we can hit it anyway. You know, myself or somebody, staff would ride around and mark off addresses that put it out on our list and identify those and say, don't pick these up.
And then it'd be a code enforcement issue.
Yeah.
So the ones that already have opted out?
So.
Have we sent them a notice to say, okay, we've accepted the fact that you have opted out and this is, you know, and with, with this information that we're coming up with, have we did anything like that so that they'll know you, you opted out of everything?
They're giving up all of it.
They have an idea of what, everything, you've opted out of all of this.
Yeah, I can do that.
Instead of just, you know, okay.
Do we have to notify them, Mike?
It's a good idea.
I mean, because some of them will come up with something, I did, well, I want my trash.
I didn't know about that, I want to opt back in now.
But we need to let them know, you just didn't opt out of trash, you opted out of service, you opted out of brush pickup, leaf pickup. They need to be specifically notified about what they have opted out for.
And it could, would that be too burdensome to do?
I think I could do it as a mail merge through Excel.
We have the addresses, we know where to send them.
How many, how many are we at now?
Two oh three as of today.
Two oh three, okay.
Is that up or down?
It, it was two oh seven at the beginning of the week, so.
Okay.
Reality setting in.
Yes.
And it's, it's going to, it's going to be, a lot of them going to come back and move because, like I was telling D W earlier, I think people are beginning to think for themselves, they're not listening to that chatter in their ear, they're beginning to think for themselves.
Well, when you stop and think about it, for twenty-five dollars, all the things we've mentioned, they're getting more than just trash pickup from Bays or Sharp or whoever was there before. I mean, that's a good deal for twenty-five dollars.
It is. Are we going to get any problem about the transfer station?
How so?
Well, I remember we had a gentleman here that was, that was one of his main points that he was complaining about, that the transfer station, I mean, that currently, town folks can drop their trash, can go to county dumps and stuff.
But we're paying county taxes too.
Yeah, I know, I know we are.
So.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to.
No, no, if you.
You talking about our transfer station or the county's?
The, the trans, he, he mentioned, if you'll recall, he mentioned the fact that, he, he was complaining that we weren't going to let people use the transfer station.
That's part of the twenty.
As part of that. And then, and then he, he mentioned in there that as, as a town resident, we can go to any of the, of the county dumpsters and put stuff in there or the, or the recycling.
So if you've opted out, you can use the transfer station? It's just you've got to, you've got to pay by the weight.
Just like a town, a county, any county.
If you're in, if you're paying the twenty-five dollar fee.
I, I got that, but I mean, that, that's the only thing I was, like I said.
I guess the difference is our collection and disposal service, and I'll just call it that specifically, is funded by a fee. The county's collection and disposal service is funded by the taxes that we pay as county taxpayers.
Right. Okay.
And that's what's different about it.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it, just as long as, as long as we understand that we're going to.
You're going to notify.
Incoming missiles.
It's going to be hard on D W's staff to keep track of all this, but I mean, that's.
But the county's, is not paying town taxes.
Right, outside of the town.
Yeah, outside of the.
Yeah, the twenty-five dollar fee gets you use of our transfer station as part of our collection and disposals.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I, and I'll define all that in my role as well.
And we have county people to come to our transfer station now and give you an example, if somebody lives in Bell Town, it's closer for them to come to us and they're willing to pay that, you know.
The tipping fee or whatever.
Right, you know, three cent a pound, you know, what equals sixty dollars a ton, but most times, you know, ten bucks or something.
Right, we just get as town, it's up to five hundred bucks.
If you've opted out, you're just going to pay that from pound.
And they think it's more convenient to come there than to drive down to the other one.
But for us, as town residents, up to five hundred bucks, we don't pay.
Right.
Are y'all requiring identification for these folks?
You got to, you got to show your driver's license or. You gotta, you gotta show your driver's license, or. Now, some people ride with somebody because they don't have a truck or something, so they'll ride with somebody, but we say, all right, you know, whoever's in the vehicle's gotta show approval.
Right.
And what I've been doing is printing that list that we're talking about, that we have, and I'm printing it, leaving it at Scale House for them to reference by, because it's nothing in the system yet. Yeah.
As far as the time periods.
They've always been really, I, I dumped a lot of brush there. I guess I'll have to show my ID. Yeah, well, I mean, you know, you get to the point too where you know people. Yeah, I, they, they know, they laugh at me, they just.
As far as closing on Saturday, that's not a temporary, because I know.
Oh, well, no, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't.
That's not on the short term table.
We haven't even talked about that. I mean, that's, I mean, we can certainly, um, you know, I think DW and Anne and Bart maybe have, have kind of done some work to show where we stand right now, and maybe budget wise, with losing two hundred customers, is, I don't wanna speak for you, but maybe they should give, give us a little bit of that.
Okay.
To see where we are.
But that's not, not something we need to decide immediately, and that's more of a.
Well, I mean, I think tonight, we're getting the information, if we think that's something operationally that makes sense, I mean, the way, but.
Four, four, okay, about half.
So, I guess, is that where we transition? We've gotten everything kind of short term.
I think I've got what I need, and I will draft something and email to you tomorrow.
Is there anything, Mike, you think also that maybe tonight, you know, that must be decided for guidance?
I can't think of anything, but I'm sure I'll think of something as I'm riding home. I'll, I'll give Bart a call tomorrow morning, and I'm sure that once I see what he drafts, I'll think of something as well. That's just the nature of this.
Alright, so, whatever you think, Tim, on.
So, yeah, no, I wanna, I mean, let them kind of give us some of the, I mean, the, just kind of high level kind of stuff of what they've been thinking about. You know, and what kind of hole, or if we're looking about a hole, maybe they've got it figured out. I'm hoping they've got it figured out, that there's really not a hole right now in that budget, so.
Something that someone asked me about, and maybe either Bart or DW or Anne could answer this question. Someone asked me if the town was to privatize our trash collection service instead of having a public service, would that save the town money?
Alright, that's the bigger picture item, that's kind of down, uh, after Mike's presentation. So just, if you don't mind, we'll hold that thought. Uh, like I said, we're, right now, it's kind of shortened on, looking at the short term, then we're gonna switch into kind of some longer term thoughts, maybe. So, Anne, DW, whatever, who, who wants to start?
I'm gonna pass around Saturday info for, um, for you to look at, and just a quick summary. The Sat, uh, the landfill is open on Saturday. This came up because, you know, when Anne and I talked, how much we were still short in budget, and just looking at everything. You know, because it's, it's not one big chunk that we can do to make it work. It's gonna, it's many pieces of that puzzle. Uh, so, you know, Tim and I had talked, Bart and I had talked about Saturday. So Saturday, we have two people working overtime, uh, on Saturday half day that were open. So what I did, I compiled a list for you from January through June of this year, and as you can see, we had two hundred and sixteen people total for those six months. Twenty-five Saturdays, you divide that traffic up, so you're averaging about, you know, eight point six is the average of people coming in. Out of that, you know, hundred and seventy-one of them are bringing trash, uh, and forty-five people of those customers were brushed. Only twenty-nine over the six month period actually compiled that they had to pay something, and there was a total of five hundred and eighty dollars total for the six months. I think Anne can tell us overtime wise, what we paid overtime for the six months, you know, as a comparison.
Yeah, we're looking, if you eliminate Saturday operations for the year, this is on the low end, you would save five thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
A year?
Yes, so not a lot.
Is that a year or refers at the six?
That's a year.
A year. Alright.
Just to shift into the overall picture, so we're gonna be at two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven customers, that's kind of where we're ballparking. That's eight hundred and fifty-seven thousand one hundred in revenue, so the number of customers, twelve times twenty-five dollars a month times twelve months. So when we take how much we put in our budget, and we subtract out that revenue that we're getting, we're short a hundred and seventy-two thousand nine hundred. And so DW does have some plans here on how we can balance out those expenses, and I'll let him go into the details, but the gist of it is two of the new positions we put to refuse. With less refuse accounts to pick up, we think that their time could be split. Twenty percent of it would be allocated to refuse, and eighty percent of it would be allocated to streets crew or VDOT. We base this on eight hours divided by a forty hour work week, is how we came up with that. That would save you a hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars in the solid waste budget. And then we also looked at our administrative percentages. Now, excluding this year, we said, how much do you really spend as the director and the assistant director on solid waste? And so we looked at reducing those, and that could save us fifty-five thousand five hundred and eighty dollars roughly. So when we took all of those options, and we subtracted out the shortfall, we had a gap of around fourteen thousand two hundred, which in a budget that size is pretty close. We think we could find that with exponential savings.
So we're fourteen thou, fourteen thousand, or?
That's the last figure, yes.
So we're shifting basically that hundred and three to, uh.
Because what, my thought on it was, because originally, we had budgeted for this year coming up, two new solid waste collector positions. And then we had also put in there for two people for the street side, and we had discussed and said, before we hire those people on the street side, we would just use temp people to see what the need was, you know, as, because we didn't really know, taking those areas, I mean, how much sign work, grass cutting and stuff, we just don't really know. We, we would gauge it by using temp people to gauge to see if we needed that. Well, after what the people opting out and stuff, we've been able to adjust the trash routes that we can send two people out to go pick up the new stuff at the beginning of the week. The rest of the week, like Wednesday's route, is only one person added on that route that didn't opt out. I mean, you can just add that to the regular route. Thursday, it, it came down, it's only twenty something. You know, the bulk of the people that are staying opted in is on Monday, and Monday too. So we'll shift those two positions, that are full time coming out of solid waste, we're gonna use them the rest of the week, because we had already said we needed people on the street side. We just use it and use our VDOT money, because that's what they're gonna be doing, that type of work, and then the days they work trash, we'll subtract that twenty percent out of the solid waste, the same. And then, don't, you know, instead of having four positions, we're only gonna hire two.
And, and using the VDOT funding, um, is that kind of coming out of the additional new VDOT funding we're getting? Or is it coming out of, we gotta, we're gonna have to move stuff around on the general fund side too, to?
We'll have to balance it.
Yeah, okay.
From either paving sidewalks or temp labor.
Right, because you've got, you have temp labor built in there right now, so that you can take some of that out there.
But based on what you're saying, we have a fourteen thousand dollar gap, but then we still.
Because we did that, yes.
If we did.
And it started at a hundred and seventy.
I was gonna say, it's not too bad to me.
And if you close Saturday, you're looking, now you're looking at eight thousand, you know.
So that didn't count the cut on Saturday?
That was in that fourteen thousand gap.
Oh, that was in the fourteen thousand, going ahead and doing that operationally.
So if you put the five thousand eight hundred back in, you're really at like twenty.
Okay, alright.
So if any of these two oh three opt to back in at some point in time, that would help out on this, correct? About how many? Half or?
Um, let's see, took one, fourteen thousand, and. Need forty-six people to opt back in.
Oh.
Feasible?
Yeah, it's possible.
So, so where's that kind of break, is, I mean, when those two hundred dropped out, I mean, where's kind of the break even if, okay, a hundred people opt back in in January? You know, I mean, I guess temporarily, we can figure that out for the six months till we get to the next budget cycle. But there's got, I guess there's probably some number where you're gonna feel like, okay, operationally, we need two more people versus, you know. Probably hadn't thought that far ahead yet, but, um, you know, and, and that'll be just, I feel almost kind of, depending on where they opt in and what that does to that days.
That's kind of where I was headed with what I asked, isn't that okay? At what point would you need additional people in there?
If, if everybody was to opt back in, then we would go back to the original plan.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think that's gonna happen.
Right.
I think some people just did, said they're not gonna do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, we're not gonna get all that two oh three, but I could easily see.
I can see us getting that forty-six.
Yeah, yeah, at some point. Once, once they get the notice about you not getting any of it.
This is by July twenty-eighth, so we gotta get that notice out quickly.
Yes.
Any thoughts on the Saturday, or do we?
I mean, I like it, but it doesn't, that's when I go. But I get it, if it's gotta go, it's gotta go.
It's when I used to go, but I can go anytime.
I know, you can come pick mine up. You can come back.
Is that legal?
So what's your hours during the week? So.
Well, Monday through Saturday, it's the same, eight to twelve.
Eight to twelve.
Uh, I mean, during the week, people are there till three thirty.
Right.
Uh, we just.
Scale House is not open though.
No, because all, all we do in the afternoon is after twelve, we have base people come in, and we just weigh the trucks, but the person in Scale House goes out and cuts the grass and does the grounds work, stuff like that during the week.
I mean, you said, we're not getting the numbers on Saturday anyway, so.
No.
I get it. Are we willing to sacrifice it?
Well, you've got a place to go, you're just gonna have to.
July twenty-three.
I gotta change clothes. I ain't going to that one. They got yells at me if I drop a bag.
Alright, um, anybody, any other thoughts, I mean, on Saturday?
We'll probably hear a little bit about it, some pushback, but.
Yeah, but I mean, the numbers don't lie. I mean, eight people on average go. I mean, it's probably the same eight people, a lot of time.
I, I close it. I go quite often.
Bob, you got any thoughts on closing it down for Saturday?
I think Saturday should be closed.
There?
It's just not worth.
I agree.
I mean, it's really not worth, and, and we get the pushback, the supposed to come, wherever we're gonna get that anyway.
Everybody good?
That sounds good to me.
Alright. I mean, is that something we, I mean, that's still an operational thing, we're just giving guidance, right?
That's still something that's within Bart's, right, as town manager.
Okay.
Alright.
Rolling right along.
Anything else, short term wise? Alright, so, um, moving in kind of, I guess the next thing is obviously the code revision. Um, so, obviously, well, not obviously, I mean, there may be, you know, long term things we talk about here in a little bit that may not happen very soon, but I, I was, this code is kind of very far out of date as of today. So should we really concentrate on getting it straight for where we are right now with some, with the opt out guidelines? And, uh, I'm looking to you, Mike, for kind of some guidance here, and then if we, if we come back, because we're not gonna make some, we're not gonna make any decisions tonight on if, how, if we change majorly our operations, I don't, you know, so.
If there's just dead language in here though, we can take that, that can.
Yeah, the main thing that I would suggest, for the first round of cuts, so to speak, to, you know, come to you at your next town council meeting or first August meeting, I would just go through and delete a whole bunch of sections. There's some stuff in here that's, uh, really good. Regarding the duty unlawful accumulation of on premises, regular collection service, special, the different types of services that are provided, the requirements in order to be ready to, to pick it up. There will be adjustments which DW is gonna need to look over, but it's generally good language. But all this stuff about, uh, the mandatory refuse recycling program, which we don't have, um, all this stuff about the sanitary landfill, which we don't have. Um, a lot of that stuff just needs to be.
Yeah, just gone.
Eliminated.
And you could present something to us with the first meeting in August?
Yeah.
I mean, that's something just, there's.
Yeah, just clean up.
It can only hurt us by being in there.
Right, exactly. So, that, that's what.
I'm good with.
I think that's what our consensus is. Everybody, everybody okay with that? Trying to clean it up as quick, you know.
Right.
And then, like I said, if we make major changes or further changes, we just have to. So, uh, on changing the town ordinance and stuff like that, that, does that require, remind me, does that require public hearings and that, and?
It requires, uh, it does not require a public hearing. It does require, uh, posting.
Public voting.
Notice. Yeah, notice and posting.
Okay.
Um, so it's not that difficult.
Okay.
Uh, one thing I will note is the changes to your rates and fees schedule, that requires advertising in the newspaper.
Right. Yeah, and we're not talking about any of that.
At least not right now.
Right now, or at least right now, yeah.
But you might talk about it beginning later in the year, I'd say later in the fiscal year, you know, for people that wanna opt out or opt in this winter. But that's several months down the road, and you have a little while to think about that.
Alright. Alright. So the next, I guess moving to the next item, like I said, Mike's put, uh, some information together, uh, on models of solid waste management. So these are kind of some options we have, uh, you know, we're just gonna get the information, and if anybody wants to kind of comment any tonight, or where we can kind of go next, you know, um.
Well, I wanted to start off by, by explaining exactly what it is that's caused the problem. The town has for, I don't know, probably forever, probably since Tim Black wore short pants. The town has collected all of the solid waste within the town, okay? And that is, the town is effectively established as an exclusive service area of the town, and that is all well and good, and that's perfectly legal. The issue came up when we made the boundary adjustment, because there were existing private haulers in that area who we, and there are various, you can't exclude them from existing service territory unless you follow certain steps. And that's what has led to this whole opt out, uh, conflict that has been going on. So, uh, these are not by any means the exclusive methods of, of doing solid waste. These are methods that I have come across or negotiated myself in different localities, or seen in different localities, whatever, that seems to work, that were in different ways, but also were allowed by the code. There are other localities that do things that I don't know how they managed to legally justify, except that nobody's challenged them yet. But these are ways that are both allowed by code, and they work. And again, it depends upon your circumstances. I don't know that they would work for Bedford, but for somebody, they worked. Um, the first one is displacement, bless you, excuse me. The first one is displacement of private haulers. Basically saying, the town's gonna take over all trash pickup within town limits, regardless of whether it's the old town or the new area. Uh, in order to do that, you need to have a public hearing following at least forty-five days' notice in the newspaper and to all private companies known to operate within the service area. And then you need to make a written finding by resolution with factual support that there is either not adequate service in the area, that the use of privately owned and operating services has endangered public health or created a nuisance. Just to say, if you find that everybody in that, that there's, in the area that you're trying to displace, there's lots and lots of places where Gary McIver's going and having to write them property code enforcement complaints, then you might say, we, we need to displace in this area. Privately owned services are not cost efficient, super expensive effectively is what that means. Or displacement is necessary for a regional solid waste system. If it's a one locality system, you can't do it. Or you can't just say that it's necessary and do it. Um, if you do a displacement, you do need to compensate the haulers, and there's kind of two ways that you can do that. One is you give them five years' notice that they're going to be displaced before they have to stop operating. Or you have to pay them, if you want to displace them immediately, you pay them one year's gross receipts for providing services in that area. So it's, it's a pretty involved process. Now, if, for instance, the regional authority down in Montgomery, Blacksburg, Christiansburg area, they've done this. Um, and because it was the best way for them, and I think Giles County did this as well. It was the only way that they could really, Giles County has five towns in it, I don't know if it's crazy to have five towns in a county. it was the only way that they could really, Giles County has five towns in it. I don't know if it's crazy to have five towns in a county that's small. But anyhow, they did it a, as a way of making sure that they could finance their saw, their landfill and all of the trucks that they needed to buy, the heavy capital investment. The bondholders were only willing to purchase the bonds if they did that, so they did it. Uh, it might not be practical for us, but I want you to be aware of what that scenario looks like. The next one is kind of a variant on what we've been talking about, which is competing in the marketplace. Uh, you provide service to people who, who contract for it. Or, in our particular instance, you can opt in or opt out. There's a presumption that you're going to be served, that you can opt in or opt out. Uh, you could require people to have term contracts for revenue stability. I guarantee you that Sharps is gonna make you sign up for a few months in order to take you on. Similar kinda deal, again, similar to what you've been talking about, uh, in terms of you gotta opt in or opt out for a six-month period. You would develop, uh, rates and general conditions of service. You could have different rates for different classifications of service. For what it's worth, you likely have to step up enforcement of, uh, property maintenance codes. My guess is that part of what the original impetus, however many decades ago it was to have universal trash pickup in the town, was to make it so that people would actually carry their trash to the curb rather than have it pile up in their yard. It was a, a community appearance, community pride thing. Again, I'm guessing when I say that, but that's certainly the way, the way that I've seen it evolve in other places. Um, a third approach is to get out of the business. Uh, you develop an RFP and sell the assets and the service addresses. And you can have all sorts of different terms and conditions on how that agreement works. For, I saw one county which they privatized their landfill. The private company closed their landfill, converted the landfill to a transfer station, and, uh, basically took over most of the pickup in the county from the county. And, um, it, it was a twenty-year agreement, and that twenty-year agreement is still far from being over.
How's it going?
So far, so good.
I mean, it's clean?
I mean, they got a landfill closed that was gonna cost them seven million dollars to close, and.
But the, there's not trash piling up in people's yards and stuff?
But it, it's a county. It's much less dense than the town of Bedford. And I think a lot of people in that county take a lot of pride in having a pickup truck, even if they don't need it.
Right.
That people in the town of Bedford, part of the reason you live in a place like the town of Bedford is that you don't need a pickup truck to take care of everything on your property. The final one is to license private haulers. And you can either do this as a partial displacement, or you can just have it be, uh, they're licensed or franchised. And in return for having that license or franchise from the town in order to provide hauling services within the locality, they agree to a, to service standards, to a rate schedule. They might agree to provide some license fee to the town. Um, and even if you don't do a formal displacement in that situation, my observation is that that effectively results in displacement. The reason being that if you have, let's say that you have two haulers in the town, let's say that we get totally out of the business, but we say you're gonna have to be a licensed hauler in order to haul trash in the town. Or even if we don't say you have to, but we're gonna let you. What happens is, you require them to provide service in the town to everybody at a defined price. They might have a license fee that they provide, that they pay to the town. They have service standards that they need to meet. We tell citizens when they're moving into town, just the same way that we say, you know, the, this is, you, here's where you sign up for your electric, here's where you sign up for, here's the two companies that provide telephone, here's the two companies that provide internet. Just the same way that we do that on the list is also, here's the two companies that are licensed to provide trash service within the town. And so you're, in effect, from their standpoint, they're getting effectively, even though it's not what you intend to do necessarily, they're effectively getting free advertising from the town. And if they do something to somebody, they can call up the town and say, "We want you to go yank John's Haulers chain," and we can, and they knock it off. That's, uh, that's another model that has worked in many places. Who, who have decided that they don't wanna be in the business, but that they're not comfortable letting it be the Wild West either. So those are different models. You can combine those um, in lots of different ways.
So you can combine, combine the franchising, uh, piece with the competing piece as well?
Correct.
Potentially?
Yep.
Based on your experience, I know, maybe you don't want to, and it's okay, but for our size of town, what we have here, do you have one that would favor over another? And if you're not comfortable with saying, I, I get it.
My suspicion is that it would be to some degree, this is legal advice, and there's a lot of stuff on that that I'm not gonna go into. As a matter of policy, I don't know that going displacement is the best idea. You might want to. If you want to, I'll figure out how to make it happen for you, because I'm your lawyer, but I'm not sure that that would be the best path. Some combination of competing in the marketplace and licensing private haulers is probably the way to go.
That kinda seems like where we're headed now.
Unless, unless you decide you wanna get out of the business and enter a twenty-year contract with somebody to basically take over what you do, which is a really big conversation, and has a lot of difficulty, and you might not trust to do.
I'm not real comfortable with that, just 'cause I, I moved here for a reason. I like our pretty little town. I'd like to keep it that way. If I wanted to live in the county, I would've moved out there. You know, there's certain benefits to this place that we should keep, you know? That's my opinion. I think it could be a nightmare if we just turn this over completely to get your own trash out.
Yeah, I would not be in favor of that.
A lot of people that don't have the, the means and the method to get their trash out.
But, but you know, I'm thinking, okay, at what point would it not be feasible for bays to pick up trash? What numbers would it have to get down to, or would it? Would it matter if it got down to a hundred? Would that make any difference?
No, I mean, you can't speak, I mean, really.
They, they don't, don't really know.
I, I think the bigger thing is, what is the long-term sustainability? How are we gonna sustain it long-term? I mean.
But that's what I'm getting at. We're gonna probably gain customers over time, because what we just talked about. When they realize for twenty-five dollars, they're getting this, these other amenities in addition to weekly trash pickup.
It's just a better deal.
And all they're getting from other haulers is trash pickup.
It's just a better deal.
Yet much better. Now, DW is right. There are some who, for obvious reasons, will never. They'll take theirs probably to Campbell County if they could, but.
I think time will heal all wounds.
For, for most, but not, not all of them. But, uh, at some point, I feel like we'll gain back customers the way we're being in much better shape. But I'm like Darren, I would not be entertaining any other idea at this time.
The Wild West idea.
I, I think, I think we forget too, with, with DW's staff, we have some flexibility in what these guys do.
Yeah.
That we wouldn't have if, if you had, if, you know, somebody else doing this. DW's staff does a whole bunch of stuff, and I appreciate them every time I see them. I, you know, I, I just, the only thing I'd like to do is see us reward them better in the wage carry, but that's a, that's a, that's a tale for another day. But I, I think DW's men, like I said, they pick up and do, I mean, they do everything from snow removal to picking up tra- you know, picking up trash along the road. Which is, uh, they're, they're really good, and, and I, I appreciate every one of them.
Well, if you look at the county, the county just pushes that snow to the middle of the street up here.
And that's true.
One thi- one thing I still, uh, am trying to figure out financially is, obviously, um, we've got some fixed costs, I mean, with our landfill closure cost. We've got, um, you know, the, the fees we're paying for hauling commercial stuff. Um, and then the cost of, you know, getting rid of the residential stuff. I mean, how deep a dive can we, because I mean, I'd really like to know how mu- how many, how many cents, how many pennies on the tax rate we're using to kinda support this. And, and I'm not suggesting that we, but, I mean, there's two ways to look at this. We can obviously continue to do like we do now, to kinda support it with taxes and fees. Uh, the, the other option is, okay, we support it all with fees and make it a true enterprise fund. Uh, or, or the third option, which would probably cut, you know, cost on the tax rate way too much, but i- is running it all under, I guess, the general fund. And my right hand is that, the, the three options financially, ha- you know, and trying to figure out where the costs are versus where the revenues are to see.
We can't mandate just we pick it up, though, I thought, because we don't have a landfill, right? I thought there was a, in the state code or something. Maybe I got that out of left field. Like, I didn't think we could, because we don't have a landfill.
Right.
That we could force everybody to use the town trash pickup. My thought.
We could do, we can do, uh, we can do a displacement. Displacement is a full displacement. The part, the reason why it's probably not, I think I said, the, the reason why it usually happens is that you have a regional landfill, and the only way that you can pay for it is by issuing bonds, and the only way that you can sell the bonds is by making sure that you're the only provider in the area. Or that all flow has to come, even if it's picked up by a private hauler, it all has to flow into your landfill so that you can get the tipping fees and count on it.
Right. So, I, I mean, I, I think we probably oughta, I mean, if we're, before we get too far into looking at all long-term options, we, we might need to, and I don't know how difficult that is, because I know there's some of it's kinda.
The accounting on it, we could today say, okay, the solid waste fund is not gonna be an enterprise fund anymore, we're gonna move it into the governmental fund. We don't have to change our accounting. It can still be Fund Seventeen. It can still have all the same accounts. It can still have a fee that supports it. But what that does is it changes the way that we account for it in our audit report, and it's no longer treated as a fund that is going to cover itself with that fee. And our financial report is probably still gonna be shown separately because it's a major fund, but it could be, if it's not a large dollar value, consolidated into our general fund. It's just still supported by that fee structure. Just kinda like Parks and Rec. You can still provide services through Parks and Recreation in charge of fee to cover it. Similar methodology. Can you tell me if I'm wrong?
I'm not, I'm not gonna tell you how to implement Gatsby. I've certainly seen many enterprise funds that everybody knew were never gonna balance, but that at least the bulk of their costs were covered. And then there was a little tax subsidy at the end of the year.
And I think that's what we kinda probably really need to see yet, kinda how much we're subsidizing it with taxes, maybe, versus.
I thought we knew. I thought we knew.
This year, we think a hundred thousand dollars is gonna need to be transferred to cover it.
And that's before, that was after these changes we're talking about, or would that be?
That's just last year's budget, um, before we talked about new services or anything like that.
And I've got a question. Now, obviously, we're trying to trim some money from the budget, because obviously down the road, we are gonna be losing at seven hundred fifty. Now, what do you think would be more cost-effective for the record between us doing, we're doing currently, or privatizing the trash service?
If you, and I'm assuming by privatizing, you're eliminating the twenty-five dollar pickup fee. If you eliminate that revenue, there's still four hundred thousand dollars in fixed costs that don't go away. So, the general fund would then absorb those costs, and we would have to cover it.
And that's the landfill closure monitoring?
And salaries for administration.
And, and then there would still be costs involved. Then we would have to also talk about, okay, if we, if we're talking about privatizing, you're basically talking about privatizing curbside garbage. You're not, the, most of these companies are not gonna provide leaf pickup. They're not gonna provide bulk pickup. They may provide it, but they're gonna charge the customer more for that. Uh, they're not gonna provide brush clip pickup. I mean, you know, so then you have to also talk about making a decision there. Are you gonna eliminate that service? Are you gonna charge for that? Either through taxes or through a, a fee, you know, so, um, uh, yeah, I mean.
One other comment is if we do transfer the, um, solid waste fund into a governmental fund, then that inter-fund liability between the general fund and the solid waste fund would be consolidated. So that would wash out. We would probably wanna do an entry to eliminate it. That's around two point one million right now, that the solid waste fund owes the general fund, that we're not sure they could ever pay it.
I got a question for DW. So if we displace the private haulers, would that include, like, the ones that goes and picks up the commercial trash at the restaurants and stuff like that? That, uh, company know how to go in there and pick and beat trashcans up? Would that take, would that become part of us too? If we displaced them completely?
I, I thought if he was talking displacement, it would be residential pickup.
Yeah.
Not, not dumpsters and stuff, front end loading.
Oh, yeah, yeah, just.
Class, I think they call it class two and three under DDQ regs. Class two and three, I don't think you can displace.
Cause I just know, cause if we displaced private haulers, they actually, this company does pick up commercial trash throughout the whole town at different businesses and stuff like that. And didn't know if that would be, uh, thing that would be displaced too, and then we would have to buy a different truck to... I didn't know. I was just asking.
And you could also, I don't think that you can displace class two and three, but even if you could, you could also just decide you're not gonna.
Yeah.
Okay, just ask.
I mean, it, it, another thought too is obviously, um, on the commercial piece, uh, you know, we're picking up commercial trash, a little bit of it in the downtown areas and some of these businesses on our residential route. And, um, we're paying the county for a portion to, to, uh, you know, dump that commercial piece. I mean, does it make sense to look at the idea of maybe getting out of the, uh, you know, privatizing the commercial piece of it and just stick with the residential? I mean, I don't know. I mean.
I mean, I have basic trash in mind. I have one trashcan that gets about half full once a week.
Well, no. What I'm saying is, the county charges us, what is it, ten percent?
Ten, ten percent of the total weight that we bring in, they consider to be commercial.
Whether it's commercial or not.
I got you.
And, and we've got to, that's something that Bart and I have talked about, that, you know, with the annexation, obviously, our total number went up, but it's, that total number that went up by is a hundred percent residential.
So that percentage is bound to go down.
Yeah. I think that's the first thing we need to talk about with them, is hopefully they can drop that percentage then, so.
Well, we need an MOU on that percentage anyway. We don't have anything in writing on that percentage. And frankly, I just haven't been paying that percentage, cause we don't have anything in writing on it.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's something that county staff just came up with, and we said, needs to be documented.
The agreement says all residential trash is free.
Residential trash, yes. They, they assume that a certain percentage of that is mixed in, which there's no way to document that.
Yeah. Without having a separate route, which is not efficient.
I've talked to the county administrator about entering into an MOU, but haven't heard back from him.
Okay. Well, we'll just let that lie there right now. So any other thoughts, or where we go from here, or anything?
What about a timeframe for us to make a decision? Like, should we set like, okay, we gotta.
Well, with that, uh, what kinda more information do you need?
I mean, to choose one of these here, or a blend, you know?
Yeah.
By the end of the year, end of the calendar year, what?
I'm sorry, we were.
As far as when to decide, what are we gonna be?
I think by the end of the calendar year, we oughta have some clear direction, cause we'll be talking about next year's budget come January, February.
That's reasonable. So we got time. We got some to work with. We're gonna see how this works for a few months. We're going to see how this works for a few months.
All right. Any other thoughts, questions?
Is there anything else you guys think we need to decide tonight or give guidance on? I think I've already asked that, but I want to make sure.
I feel good about my project.
Yeah, the main thing I just want to see is which approach, whether we're blending a couple of these or going with one or the other, which one's going to be the most cost effective for us? Which one's going to be the least expensive by the same time? Or we're not going to be losing our shirt? So we just got to kind of wait and see what's going to be the best way to go.
And I agree as far as cost effectiveness, but I also, there are certain basic functions of government. I believe in small government, but I believe in basic functions of government. And picking up the trash is kind of important, so, I don't think, you know. I don't mind the government being involved in that one.
Is there any way to, to kind of, I mean, I think trying to figure out, obviously, getting out of the business. I mean, you're going to have to figure out, you know, how are you going to pay for those other things? Where are you going to try to get revenues out of that, getting out of the business? I mean, I'm just trying to think how we try to put some kind of comparison together to even, um, I mean, is that something we can do internally? Is that something we would need to probably get our natural advisor?
Not another consultant.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, if you're seriously thinking about changing the business model, you've got to be able to compare how it's going to affect revenues and.
Mr. Lockaby can put something together.
I mean, have you been with anybody, Mike, that's been through this kind of discussion? And what they've put together to kind of help the decision-making process? I mean.
Usually they have, there are consulting engineers who can put together models. Whether you trust them or not, it's a whole nother question. Sometimes they work, sometimes they don't work.
Right.
The one that they worked up for Giles County works. I can tell you that the one that they worked up in Amherst County, the engineer made some pretty questionable assumptions. And now they've got a transfer station that they aren't going to need for another six or eight years.
Right, and that's different because they were trying to figure out landfill, right? It would, we're never going to have another landfill in town, you know, I don't think.
But my point is that.
Yeah.
It's questionable, you guys, it seems as though, what I'm hearing you say is that you probably want to start off by figuring that we're going to be competitive. This is going to be a competitive marketplace, but we think that ultimately people are going to see the town as being by far the best, best value.
Right.
And we'll know in a year, I guess, whether that's playing out, so.
Well, that's for the cleanliness of the town. We got to weigh that in.
Definitely, because we do have excellent service next for the trash, for the brush pickup, leaf pickup. Now, question couldn't, one of us perhaps call Bays or some of these other trash hauling companies and ask them, hey, how much would you charge to get my leaves, my brush, stuff like that? Just to see if they would charge for that and then say, hey, this is the comparison.
Call anybody.
Yeah, they don't do it. They don't, they.
I don't think they, they don't have a truck suit in that.
No, they, they don't.
No, they're in the trash haul.
Yeah, that's it.
That's it, they're, they're in the trash.
I, I think we need to, this is a conversation we need to have periodically.
Yeah.
As we go through this to see where we at, not to, so when time comes that we have to make a decision, we're already at that point.
Yeah, I think probably.
Instead of just forgetting about it and waiting till we get to a point. I think this is something that we should include in our workshops and talk about periodically. Okay, where are we at now? What do you think? What ideas do you have there? That's what I think.
And we'll be able to review it every six months.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll keep it up.
So, right now, we're going to, we're going to implement the short-term changes through the, uh, BARTs rules. And then try to have by the first meeting in August, a rewrite of the existing town code.
Yes, the codes.
Not the complete rewrite, just the dead language out.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, incorporating what we've, Lee put in about the timeline, about opting out and that kind of stuff.
And have DW go over the list of services and what's included within different things to make sure it accurately reflects actual progress.
And then, then we can kind of, and then we're going to make these kind of adjustments in the budget that we talked about. Is that, and you'll have to do a budget, I guess, amendment to do those. And then, uh, kind of keep an eye on it from that point and, and see if, you know, we need to make some tweaks as we get closer towards the end of the year on an additional fee to opt in or opt out. Uh, and see how we're. Is that, and then, then, you know, long-term.
Right.
Keep thinking about.
To see how it's working.
See how it's working, don't jump to, don't, yeah, jump, I don't know.
Right, we don't know yet.
Right, okay. Does that like, sound like a game plan everybody okay with?
I'm good with it.
Just one note on the accounting. I have to close the books by August fifteenth, so I have to know if I'm transferring it by that date. To and, from an enterprise fund to a governmental fund. So do you have a timeline on that one?
August fifteenth?
August fifteenth.
What's our calendar? What's our first meeting?
August eleventh, I think. No, that's not right.
Like I said, it did notice, come out?
Right, or it would have to go in the next year. The only benefit to doing it this year financially is that you're going to have a surplus from American Rescue Plan Act money that is going into the general fund. So it would be an opportune time to make that decision if you would like to.
Yeah, August eighth is the first meeting.
Yep, and the fifteenth is the third Tuesday of the month, so.
Yeah, the fifteenth. You probably want to know before the day of though.
That's okay. We'll probably have to work with the auditors on this one, I haven't ever transferred before.
I'm definitely intrigued by moving the solid waste fund into the general fund. Just from the manager's perspective. But.
And so you just budget it under public?
Let's do it correctly, if, if not quickly.
Can you, is, I mean, is there more information?
We don't have to have a formal action. It's just an accounting transfer, it's a management decision. So like, I would just need a consensus and then we could make the transfer.
Okay.
Just FYI.
We got two more meetings.
Yeah, let's, let's think about that until the next meeting and see.
Attached to it.
We need to do it in August, we need to, again, first meeting in August.
All right. Anything else right now on solid waste?
I don't have anything.
Okay, we'll adjourn the work session. All right.
Aye.
Well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, everybody, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from June the 27th. Any corrections, comments on the minutes? No? All right, well, I'll approve those that are submitted. Next item, report of town manager, Mr. Warner. How was vacation?
It's good. It's good. I'm ready to go back. To report, the police department personnel are currently engaged in cop camp program this week. Just want to take this opportunity to compliment them all for going the extra mile to reach out and include our younger citizens and participants in that event. Also want to report today that staff participated in initial negotiations related to the award of a $1.2 million Virginia individual development account grant offered through the CDBG program of the Department of Housing and Community Development. This is a collaborative regional approach that includes localities from six counties. We would be the lead agency on this. And its focus is on micro enterprise business development and promotion of home ownership for low to moderate income individuals. And that concludes my report, but I'll be happy to respond to any questions you have.
Are there any questions, Mr. Warner? No? All right. Appearances before council. We've got one person signed up this evening, Shane Stanley. Mr. Stanley, if you would, come up and just give us your address and give us your thoughts.
I'm Shane Stanley, currently in the house at 1108 Galak Street here in town, in D.C. I'm from Giles County, we're a little, five little towns, I'm not talking, one's the size of Larry and they're incorporated. I'm here today kind of also on the same subjects and topics that y'all are on with the solid waste situation. But at the same time, I'd also like to raise attention to the fact that something was mentioned in previous town council members about what does the county taxes do for the town? In a situation now Christiansburg, the town Christiansburg is questioning Montgomery County's for the same reason. Because Montgomery County is trying to charge Christiansburg for SRO officers and other services that they don't actually provide because the town is still having to send their own PD officers over to the schools in response to issues. I would like to suggest, if nothing else, if Bart's a member of municipal league or something, maybe getting all the other town managers together and looking at what we can do to get the general assembly to change the laws. Maybe we need to stop giving the counties our funds, is what I'm suggesting. Because the other thing is Beffer County in previous meetings, you know, it was implied and y'all caught a lot of heat because of the annexation. It was never mentioned that the Beffer County Schools got $90 million. The county got about $110 million over the last few years because of the new taxes and the changes in situations. And they're not talking about how these services aren't provided. I have a lot of friends in animal rescue and they're coming to me and asking me, you know, what can I do? Because now the sheriff's department is refusing to provide animal control assistance when they want to do situations. The rescue needs, needs that situation. So if he's able to count our population for his grants and things that he requests money from the federal government and the state and then he wants to refuse services, I think that that needs to be looked at very, very, very much so. And then on top of that, you've got the county running and then questioning the fact that Beffer County is not honoring the mutual response agreements. So there's a whole lot of things going on at the county level. At the same time, I'm coming to you too because of the solid waste situation where we're going to have to cooperate with the county. The landfill and solid waste issue is not a new issue. I've sent each of you an email and you now have a copy of something that I did in 2020. With the county and I got it before the town, with Mr. His, the help of Mickey Johnson, is the fact that there are no new landfills, nobody wants new landfills, and all the landfills are filling up. And the problem that we also face is that we're at the mercy of another board of supervisors for another county for where our trash is going that tomorrow could cut us all off. When Beffer faced a problem in 2019 to 2020, Region 2000 told them, no, you can't bring trash to us and we will dump our private haulers to look for mail from Beffer. And if it's there, the hauler's getting charged and we're going to take you to court. Because y'all refused to participate, Region 2000 from day one. The solution that is before you doesn't have to be done all at once. It's a zero waste management facility. There are actually funds and grants that are out there. The U.S. Army at one time was going to pay $40 million for anyone that could bring precious metals back from e-recycling. The new thing now that you've got is lithium recovery is going to be a big deal. We actually, I think, are primed for this. And when an industry or business comes into our community, the first thing they're looking at is the services. And one of them is where's my waste going? What is it going to cost me to handle my waste? Especially if it's a factory like Frank Schavan's was here. You have Sam Moore's that hauls at least one load a day off to the landfill. So with the e-waste and the zero waste, you have Georgia Pacific, I don't know if any of y'all knew this, but Georgia Pacific's power plant that uses liquid fuel made from organics was paid for 100% by the Department of Energy. So we have all of these bonds and these, these grants and all of this free money that we can be applying for to actually be the first in the community of Southwest and Central Virginia to build a zero waste factory or facility that would also be profitable, create jobs, bring industry in here. And that, that's where I'm at with this because I sounded the alarm three years ago to the county and I got, kind of got ignored. So I'm, I'm just going to ask maybe if town council and their communications with the county would look at, hey, can we get together on this? This is now something that we're all faced with. We could all be cut off. We could, you know, we could change the policies, the codes, regulations and put everything in, in, in perfect motion. But all of a sudden, if you can't take your trash anywhere, you can't take your trash anywhere. And that's where we're at currently. One of the things I also wanted to bring up as a town resident, because I think that we're all co-opted into this. We all have to join in the fact that we're responsible for expenses, keeping the town beautiful. And when people started being able to opt out, some things came to my attention and I thought about it is, is maybe we should have, anyone that's currently on the plan and paying for trash pickup would be exempted. But I think that we should have a hundred dollar deposit that's payable and $10 a month and 10 monthly installments. I'm going to get to the reason why on this. If we don't do that, what you're going to see people do when fall or spring cleanup come, they're going to want to opt in. They're going to want to opt out. And the other thing is there's no penalties in our current code because we never had an opt-out option. So there's no penalties that's going to have to be added for illegally dumping trash into a neighbor's can. If a neighbor catches them and calls the PD, the PD doesn't have anything they can write down the neighbor up for. If the can's out to the road, it's not trespassing. If the can is actually public property, it's not trespassing. So we're, we're looking at that situation. The other thing would be that if there's a penalty for putting dirtbrush in, in a neighborhood that's signed up, but they're not signed up, then what you're looking at, then this would, would say, hey, you're not going to opt in and opt out because every time you opt out and want to opt back in, you still got to pay a hundred dollar deposit. One other thing is I want to bring to your attention is the Beffer Regional Water Authority, if we want to talk about expenses. Recently, a lot of times I see where DWS people work very hard to do things. Recently at Beffer Memorial Hospital, they put brand new sidewalks in. There, there's no communication with the Beffer Regional Water Authority and I do plan on applying for the board because I have other questions such as why is it that everyone, including the secretary that lives all the way in Salem now has a brand new SUV to drive to and from work? And if their excuse would be that they don't want to lose their nonprofit status, they've got to spend all that money in a fiscal year? That's not true because what they could do is by percentage of customers, ask the town to take their percentage of customers for any excess of money and place it in the capital improvement fund and hold it on behalf of BRWA. And then when they need it, then it can be transferred back to them. So that was, that would not be an excuse I would buy from them. Other than that, that's the only thing I wanted to bring to your attention was the potential for a deposit and the lack of penalty for people misusing and abusing. The only other thing that would come to light that I sent each of you an email on that I didn't want to read the whole thing would be the probability of making sure too that you put in the code that landlords can't use us to do their accounting. So it's either if the landlord wants to pay the electric, he also pays the trash or we're not going to split the bill because then we're doing his accounting for him. And then also that to save the town money so we don't have to put placards out in and out, in and out for spring and fall cleanup. With spring and fall cleanup, if we put our cans to the curb, then, then the trash crew knows that we are legally able to be picked up from them, if that makes sense. And that saves us money on having to buy placards or them having to have a little route map and look at it and slowing them down on the process. If the can's not out, your trash don't get picked up. Because that, that can has a number on it and that number and it has the town logo on it. So I would, I would like to see maybe that done. And then also, I think what I'm seeing too is properties in a town for accounting purposes might need to start being listed as primary home of the owner or, or a rental property, which will give y'all a database if you ever decide to enact a tax for rental properties. And then we would also know who the landlords or that a property is a landlord-owned property and therefore the trash can needs to be picked up if the bill's the length of it. Just, just, just some ideals. And that's about all I have to say. But thank you for your time. Thank you for all the hard work that y'all did as far as the annexation. And thank you for all the trouble that y'all went through.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right. Let's see here, council comments, Mr. Carson starting?
No, don't have one.
Huh?
I'm good. I'm good.
First, I want to thank everybody for coming out to the meeting tonight. Shane did bring up some really good points that I think we need to definitely look into. Obviously, tonight we discussed some of our policies involving garbage collection and stuff. It's still ongoing, but you know, something I was thinking about and I hope that I never see this in town. Years ago, obviously everybody knows I'm from Michigan, there's a town just south Lansing called Holt. What happened was somebody had their neighbor who ended up taking them off. Their neighbor that took them off was on the city council. So what this person decided to do was they decided to start a junkyard in their front yard just to try and get back at them. That's something that I never ever want to see here in the town and I don't think it's ever going to happen, at least I hope not.
Anything? Report of council committees, the electric committee met.
Last Thursday, had a very good meeting. The main topic was the developer at the middle school had requested single metering for the entire complex instead of metering for each individual unit. There was much discussion about that and basically John Wagner said it's against town code and I believe it's against state code also, so we unanimously denied that. We had some other topics we touched on, but that would come before council. And that was it.
Any other committees? No, I think it was the only committee that met since the last meeting, so. All right. Next, revisions to the agenda, any part, anything we need to, need to add? Nope. All right, we're going to roll right along, pretty late night tonight.
About time.
So new business, the town of Bedford Equal Opportunity Employee Statement.
The town's written position on equal opportunity needs to be updated on a regular basis. When approved by town council, the signed written statement is posted on the town's legal posting board in the municipal building. Legal council has reviewed and approved the updated equal opportunity statement before you. And tonight, town council has requested to approve the written statement as the town's position on equal opportunity. Time moved.
Motion in second. Roll call, any discussion? We got opportunities for people to come to work if they're looking for, for jobs, right, DW?
We will, Harry.
Anyway, but roll call.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
So that's all we had tonight other than, we got a, need a motion to go into closed session. Present to section 2.2371181 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended to discuss personnel matters regarding an annual performance evaluation.
Time moved.
Motion, second, roll call.
Mr. Haley.
Aye.
Mr. Hartwick.
Aye.
Mr. Johansson.
Aye.
Mr. Showen.
Aye.
Mr. Stanley.
Aye.
Mr. Carson.
Aye.
Mayor Black.
Aye.
Motion carries with seven ayes.
I would like the town of Bedford hereby certifies that one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the council.
Tell me, second?
Roll call.
Mr. Hartwick?
Aye.
Mr. Johansson?
Aye.
Mr. Shellen?
Aye.
Mr. Stanley?
Aye.
Mr. Carson?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mayor Black?
(laughing)
Prose she carries with seven eyes.
Aye, we're adjourned.